Call the board of the Select Board meeting of December 11th, 5 o'clock. The meeting is being recorded by DCTV for airing at a later date. Also, part of our audience, we do have remote from Mr. O'Neil of the Board, who is recovering. Mr. O'Neil is available and will be here via Zoom. Also, live, there is a live feed of this, of these interviews to department heads, if available, if they wanted to. We do have some department heads and some citizens here for us. All right. We are here to interview candidates for the position of the Town Administrator. First up is A.D. Christian Vitale. Chris, you know the Board, so we'll just, we won't have to do the introductions, so. The interview from us should last roughly 45 to 60 minutes, give or take. And then, there'll be a follow-up from the Board members, if they choose. And then, we'll end with a statement from you, or questions that you have of us. So, you all set?
All set.
All right, let's rock and roll. Okay. Candidates with the proper qualifications and experience are very important, but the ability to communicate to and be inclusive with staff, volunteers, vendors, and of course, the residents will make the real difference. Describe your leadership style and goals to achieve success in this position, and how you motivate and empower your team to achieve goals.
Thanks, Sean, and thank you to the Board for the opportunity to be here to interview for the Town Administrator position. So, I see communication as the foundation for effective leadership. And having gone to school, having a master's in strategic communications, it's something I recognized very early on, that that would be a very useful tool, really, at that time, whatever profession I was in. But specifically here, working in local government, having both your internal constituents, staff, and external constituents, the residents of the town, it's important to really have a listening ear to any concern that comes through the door. I think there is, you know, the day-to-day challenges, and then there is the things that you might not anticipate, that you really need to be on the ball for, and be ready to answer, and maybe adjust your plan. So, I think, as it relates to our staff, it's being in tune with what the needs of our various departments are, the issues of our departments, being accessible, being available, not just for when they come into our office, but also, you know, being out there, visiting our different sites, visiting the different departments on our various fours, walking around the Town Hall, and just seeing what's going on. I think, in my time here, I've tried to do that. And sometimes, you know, as I said in the first round of interviews, it doesn't always have to be for a reason. You know, you could just walk into a department just to say, "Hi, how's your day going?" I think that's very helpful, and makes people feel comfortable. When they do have a question or an issue, they can come to me, and they feel like there's that two-way level of communication. You know, with residents, I think, being responsive to questions or concerns that we face on a day-to-day basis, I think that is first and foremost what people expect. They expect, you know, if they're calling, that someone's picking up, someone takes their questions or concerns seriously, and they get a response back. It's something where, you know, I think, based on what I've read in the job profile, having a more visible role out in the community, to show that, you know, obviously, I care and I respect our staff, and I want the welfare of our staff, but also, just the general public, and showing investment in the community at large. So, I, in terms of how my communication style would be, that would kind of be the tenants I would lay on, but in terms of generally speaking, I'm someone who is a straight shooter. I will try and give you the best information that I have available at any given time, and if I don't know it, I'm gonna go look for it, so that I can be helpful to whatever request or issue is before me.
Thanks. How will you be visible and accessible to the, as the Town Administrator, to both available to the staff and also the department heads, but not just the department heads?
Certainly. So, a few different ways I see myself being available. One is, you know, having an open-door policy, where people can come in, not necessarily need an appointment, but have time blocked during the day, where people can come in, if there is a question or concern, they know I'm there. As I said before, being around and just visiting departments on a consistent basis, holding department head meetings, but in addition to that, something that we did recently, in the last couple of months, was we had a licensing and permitting issue, where there was some breakdown in communication between departments, where, you know, a permit was moved forward, but another department wasn't aware of it, and because of that, there was some enforcement action that the town had to take on the back end. So, what we did was, we got a land use group together, so it wasn't all the departments, but it was the applicable departments who may have a vested interest in this particular issue, and we met and we workshopped that issue. We came up with some solutions, with the idea that we'd be able to implement some, and we'd go back and revisit and see how it worked out. I think having more meetings of specific groups, based on their function, that they serve within the town, is incredibly helpful, whereas, you know, the monthly department head meetings, it's valuable, because you know what's going on, but it might not necessarily pertain to you and what you're doing, day in and day out. So, trying to make those type of formal meetings useful to our departments. The other thing is just having consistent one-on-ones, where you're sitting down with staff, and you're saying, "What is their particular issue that they can come to you?" And you have a little bit more time than in a group setting, and having those, depending on whether it's bi-weekly or monthly, and having a rotation where staff can, again, know that they have time blocked off in your calendar. So, when it comes to, you know, staff at large, again, I see having that open-door policy also extended to general staff as well. I think that one of the things that our prior Town Administrator did, in having a forum for the staff in various departments on a biannual basis, I think was a good start, and I would look at other opportunity, other forums, other, even events, you know, employee appreciation events that the town hosts, that they can engage with me, whether it's formally or informally.
Over the past few years, the staff has voiced concerns regarding the content of the staff meetings. And how do you envision developing the content and conducting such meetings? Because sometimes, there's always minor issues among the staff, you know, such as the hours worked, or the use of town vehicles, customer service expectations. So, how would you address these types of issues before they become larger issues?
Yeah, so, I think first and foremost, anytime you're taking time out of your day to come to a meeting, you know, I'm of the opinion that I want to get some value out of it, something I didn't know, something I need to know, something that's important or time-sensitive. I think that that type of setting is good, or if you need to convey a message, and you want to have a forum where there can be some back and forth, I think that that is a really good use of the monthly departmental meetings. You know, I think, at times, it's when you feel like you have to say everything that you're doing to justify the activities of your department, where I don't think that it necessarily benefits everyone, in terms of their own personal functions. So, you know, I would look to streamline it a little bit more. I would look at departments not feeling like they have to say what they're doing, but if it pertains to the group, for the good of the group, if there are issues that, you know, we as a department, as a town, and a town leadership can sit and workshop, and build consensus at those meetings, I think that's a really good use of that time. The other thing is, I think, for the department meetings, having a little bit more dialogue with regards to what this Board is doing, you know, on a bi-weekly basis, or, you know, at its scheduled meetings, so that department heads have a better idea, not just after it's happened, but before these issues come to the Board. So, you know, if there is additional context that we can add, more information, or different recommendation that we could bring forward, I think that'd be pretty useful, to have that before meetings, and not necessarily afterwards.
With staff at Town Hall and other locations in town, how do you ensure effective communication with your team, and what strategies have or will you have, will you use to ensure that all team members feel included and valued?
So, I think, going back to what I said in my first response, is being present at those locations, and not just for the directors, but also for the staff. You know, I think it's, it's extremely valuable to go and see the issues on the ground, and not just over an email, or on a phone call, or just in passing. I think I'm more of a face-to-face type of person, and I think you can get a lot more done in that respect. So, I think just being present is really key to that.
Here comes a highball, here comes a curve. How would you handle a difficult department head and/or elected official?
So, I think very early on, as the Town Administrator, what I would do, and with the Board, is establish goals, strategic goals, similar to, over the last six months, what we did during this interim period. You know, I think when we're all working off of the same playbook, I think that that is an incredibly useful tool to go back to and refer, you know, the various activities back to what it is that we're trying to achieve as a town. You know, and I think, going back to that last question, I would also add, and it applies to our, you know, various volunteers as well, is having those expectations and those goals laid out early on, I think is incredibly helpful, not just to them, but also to be able to effectively lead. So, with that, I would say, you know, explain what the goals are, or outlining the goals, explain what our expectations of how we're gonna achieve those, and really try and find some common grounds, even if there's a disagreement, or if, you know, there's a recommendation, and it's not necessarily the recommendation you follow, or you conflict with the recommendation, is, is try to give a sense that you're listening, even if it wasn't the recommendation you went with this time around. Yeah.
How would you foster, I know this, I know you've said it, but I want to put it couch it a different way. How do you foster effective communication and collaboration between staff, elected officials, and the community? And provide, if you can, provide an example.
Certainly. So, you know, I think, effective communication, a bit of it is lead by example, and I think another piece of it is, give opportunities for you to lower and reduce barriers to having effective communication. You know, I think, you know, as I mentioned before, having a land use group to meet, to talk about their issues with permitting, you know, what, you know, and when you have those conversations, you learn about, "Well, what's your communication style? When you sent that email, what was the tone behind that email? Did you effectively communicate, like, what your issues were? Were they interpreted correctly?" And again, being able to workshop those issues, so that, again, everyone knows, "All right, this is really the crux of the issue. This is the thing I care about the most. This is the thing that's my pet peeve." You know, especially when it comes to permitting, you know, we as a town deal with a lot of different permits, across a lot of different departments and boards, and I think, some of it is, as much as possible, also educating our colleagues, as to what our protocols are for any given department. You know, as an example, with building permits, you know, there's a set time limit that we have to respond to permits to approve them. But that doesn't always necessarily give our other departments time to work with the developers on maybe some modifications that they need to their permit plans. So, how do we communicate amongst ourselves as quickly as possible, so that we can work with these different applicants that are coming in, so that they're getting their applications processed quickly and effectively, and there's no hang-ups anywhere within the town?
Explain your approach to incorporating community feedback into town planning initiatives.
Certainly. So, one of the things, coming into my role as Assistant Town Administrator, was, we had our Engage Dartmouth platform, and working with our Communications Coordinator, one of the things that we've tried to do consistently, is update it to the projects that our residents are most concerned about, they're most visible within the public. You know, I think that that platform has a lot of features that really benefit us, whether it's doing surveys on there, being able to link to documents, link to other websites, be able to provide project timelines. That's been a very useful tool, and we've seen definitely a positive trend, in terms of the number of people who are realizing that that's a communication tool that we have out there. So, we, obviously, because we pay for it, we want to take advantage of it. You know, again, when it comes to other communication tools, you know, we have our website. One of the things that our office has done over the last several months, again, through our Communications Coordinator, is we have our What's Cooking in Town show, which I think, opportunities like that, where we're leveraging the resources and the communications tools we have, such as our DCTV, such as our town website, such as Engage Dartmouth, such as the community events we host, I think we don't have to, we don't have to go crazy with technology, sometimes it's just using the tools that we have at our disposal right now. I see community events as being an area where there's a lot of room for opportunity, in terms of outreach, as well.
We're in the business of customer service. How do you get that message out to all departments and staff members?
So, I think when it comes to customer service, I think you have to, you know, first look at the clientele, and what is their expectation coming through the door? And what are the key services that they're trying to obtain by coming here? You know, I think there are certain, you know, there are certain residents, businesses in town, who lean more on the convenience. Sometimes, they lean more on, "I want to talk to someone face-to-face, because I have a list of 10 questions," or, "I think this is the answer, but can you confirm that for me?" So, trying to figure out the type of resident, and what those residents need, it's easy to say, you know, "Hey, everything's on our permitting portal, and, you know, just go and apply." But people, you know, sometimes are technology challenged, sometimes their preference is to come in face-to-face. So, I think, having staff work with the different type of customer they may face, and giving them the tools. So, one of the things that we've done over the last several months is, we've provided professional development training for our staff, and we've had, you know, different speakers come in and provide that resource to our staff, and to departments, and whoever wanted to attend, to come here. And in addition to that, they also have that through our HR department, as a resource that they can go back and re-watch, if they were unable to attend. So, I think that those are a couple of examples, but I think, you know, it's something where, if there's a suggestion from staff, or if there's a specific issue, you know, I would want to explore those individual issues further, because it, it might not be anything that we're doing, it might be a processy issue. It might be a regulation that we have, that just bogs down something, it might frustrate residents. So, you know, it's not always something that is our doing, it might just be procedure, but either way, conveying that, so that, you know, residents and businesses have a good experience when they come into the Town Hall, I think is crucial.
Thank you. Basically, the questions are kind of segmented, so, just to let you know. Budgeting and maintaining the budget is an effort by many in the town, but the Administrator is seen as the leader. What experience do you have in developing and implementing long-term strategic plans for the town, for any, for a town?
Absolutely. So, I'll give my experiences in three communities. So, first is, you know, previously, I was the Director of Economic Development and Communications for the Town of Bristol, and I was a Director of a role, I served under an elected Town Administrator, and, you know, one of the things that we consistently did, was we looked at the town's capital planning efforts, and we looked at the timing of those, available funding opportunities, and working with our different departments, because a lot of what I did in that function was through grants and project management, was working with our different department heads to plan those out, so that we could fund them and get those completed. When it came to being an Assistant Town Administrator in the Town of Lester, it was a smaller community, and because of that, you know, there wasn't a finance department. So, the function of building and developing the town budget was done out of the Town Administrator's office. So, in that role, I built the budget book that they used to develop their budgets, before it went out to department heads, so that it was, you know, they could fill in the categories, you know, their expenditures, you could see the trends year-over-year of projected to actuals, and so, I laid the groundwork for that, so that it could be sent out to our departments, and we could start cataloging all that information. In addition to that, we also laid out that budget book, so that, similar to what we do in the Town of Dartmouth, we want to know what your mission for your department is, you know, where were your successes, what are your metrics, and what are your goals? You know, I think, you know, being Town Administrator for the Town of Dartmouth, you know, I think one of the things going forward that we have to do is, you know, because we know the budget's gonna be tight over the next few years, we know that, just like we do every year, we have to do more with less, in terms of dollars, is tying back what we're doing as a town, back to our strategic goals, and what are the services our residents are most interested in. So, with that, I would say, billing a budget, you know, getting an idea of what our revenues look like, communicating with staff of what the expectations are, in terms of service delivery, and where, when we look at our strategic goals, where are we trying to go as a town?
How do you prioritize and manage multiple complex projects with tight deadlines?
So, when it comes to deadlines, obviously, you know, we, we try to hit them all. I think, as a manager, and even in my time as interim, one of the things I've learned is, you have to be effective at delegating tasks. And it's, you know, if you're focusing on everything, you're focusing on nothing. And so, with that, I think taking different assignments that could be provided to a Director, or a staff member who can take a lead on an assignment, you know, again, if it's within their capacity to do, I think it's one way that we can help push different projects along. You know, I think, when it comes to just what I do on a day-to-day basis, in terms of time management, is, I'll sit at the beginning of the week, I'll lay out my calendar of, you know, deadlines, projects for this week, for next week, and I really live by my calendar, in terms of, you know, where I spend my time, and how I get different projects, or reports, or things of that nature, done. You know, but I would say, when it comes to, you know, general projects, is working with our staff, and, and getting what we need done, done.
What are your key considerations when allocating funds for capital improvement projects?
So, one of the things I'm really proud that we've been able to do this year, is we've changed our capital funding criteria, and we changed it from being scored at the departmental level, 1 to 10, to having a standardized grading system for our different priorities and needs. So, we went from, like I said, 1 to 10, to a 1 to 4 scale. And with that, you know, we as a town, priority ones are considered urgent needs. So, that's something that is life safety, or, you know, we're not in compliance with a regulation, or something's broken, it doesn't work, we can't do a service. So, in those cases, you know, we're able to determine, based on the input we get from our departments, what falls into that category. You know, the next category is, I would call it deferred maintenance, is, it might not be something operating optimally, it's functioning, but we might be sinking money into it, it might break down, and if we invest in it now, or we delay investing in something, the cost of the town's gonna be greater over time. Third category is your routine maintenance. So, I think most projects, in a perfect world, you know, as capital needs come up, you know, a truck has its end of life, we replace the truck right when it's deemed end of life. You know, the last one is your fourth category, which is, you know, your long-term planning. So, things that, it's not a service we provide currently, but it's something that, if the town was to invest in this thing, it would be an enhancement to services, enhancement to the residents and the community. And, you know, I think that, with all of those, you know, my approach is, you don't put all of your money, and all your eggs in one basket, because if you're just paying for things that are deferred maintenance, all of those things that are routine maintenance are now, you know, falling into the deferred maintenance category. So, spreading the money around, and, you know, at the end of the day, looking at those capital projects on that list, and tying them back to the master plan, and tying them back to the strategic goals, makes it very clear, in terms of guidance, where we want to invest those funds.
How would you handle a situation where a significant budget shortfall is discovered mid fiscal year?
So, I am very big on, get the information, so that this Board and our town can make the best, most informed decision. You know, I think that, you know, when you're looking throughout the year, it really should never get to a point where there's substantial budget shortfall, or if there is a shortfall in any of our line items, there's a reason behind it. There was an unforeseen expense, you know, there was a vehicle that broke down, and that was critical to operations. So, but if it's a structural budget issue, that's something, like, over time, I think it is a conversation with this Board, in terms of, you know, is this a one-time thing? Is this going to be a challenge that we face next year, where this deficit grows? And as a town, you know, we have to decide the best way to approach that. You know, I think there's been discussions in the Town of Dartmouth in the past, you know, in terms of using one-time revenues to plug the hole, to provide the time to come up with a comprehensive plan. You know, that's, that's an approach to take. You know, raising revenues is another approach to take, but all of that doesn't, isn't done in the silo. That's something that's done, you know, really in collaboration with this Board, with the information that we have from our financial team.
How would you approach identifying cost-saving measures within a municipal budget, while maintaining essential services, but as, making that as part of the process in developing and presenting a budget?
Absolutely. So, one of the opportunities I see, when it comes to budget development, is... Absolutely. So, one of the opportunities I see when it comes to budget development is, it's been talked about here in the past, is seeing if we can start our budget process a little bit earlier in the calendar year. And there's some information that we have to wait on in terms of state revenues, you know, to see how much we're getting in state aid and other figures. But I see there being an opportunity, sitting down with departments before we send out the budget memo, outlining what our expectations are of departments submitting those in to say, operationally, you know, where are you at? You know, throughout the year, I know, over the last several years, technology's been something that we've leaned on consistently when it comes to doing more with less. And certainly, there's more opportunities there. You know, in our audience tonight, we have our DPW, and one of the things that is going to help their operations is GIS systems, geographical information systems. So, tracking data for roads, sidewalks, street signs, and, you know, with the limited dollars that we have, where are those dollars best spent based on the data that we have available? I am very big off, if you can show me where the savings are, if you can show me how it makes your operation more efficient, then let's present it, let's see if it has merit. And, you know, I think that that's something where those opportunities come up quite often.
Describe your position on the balance between environmental and natural resources protection, economic growth, municipal revenues, and how would you achieve such a balance, if it possible?
Certainly. So, you know, the first thing I would look at is our master plan. When it comes to economic development, where it comes to, you know, preservation of our natural resource areas, is where do we as a town, or where have we as a town said, this is where we're interested in development? This is the type of development that we're interested in? You know, I think that that very clearly gives, you know, me as the town administrator, the marching orders, as to where my efforts should be spent in terms of working with our different boards and our departments on issues within those areas. You know, I would say that, you know, when it comes to, you know, regulations, there are regulations that we as a town have, you know, in our bylaws and rules that we establish, and then there's ones that come down from the state. So, I think, you know, working with our department heads and having an idea of where those state regulations may go, and what are the benefits, and also what are the downsides, and trying to get in front of those as much as possible, and making sure that our voice as a town is heard on these issues so that, you know, we as a community aren't being adversely affected in one area or the other. I think when it comes to just investing in both, I think, you know, obviously, economic development is going to be essential when it comes to new growth and helping limit the potential of having to have difficult budget conversations. You know, and I think there are certainly opportunities in the area of economic development, and I don't know if that's talked about later, but there's opportunities there. When it comes to natural resources, I think one of the things that the town of Dartmouth has spent a considerable amount of time on, and it was even in our short-term strategic goals, was water quality. And really, you know, I think a lot of our conversations kind of go back to that when it goes to what's next? What's the big issue that the town of Dartmouth is going to face? And so, I think, similar to what we have in the master plan, but going a little bit more in-depth, is having a blueprint for how the town of Dartmouth is going to address that in specific measurable goals is going to be really crucial for the next three to five years.
Have you had any experience in securing grants?
I have, yes. In all the positions I've held in government, that has been something that has been one of my jobs. For the town of Dartmouth, I have been able to procure about two and a half, three million dollars in my time here over the last year and a half. You know, with that, that's helped our various departments make their operations more efficient. It's helped, you know, again, I'll refer to our DPW, it's helped with pump station upgrades so that we can get our 40B development on Route 6 moving forward. And in addition, it just reduces the burden on our taxpayers when we can go out and procure these grants. In my prior roles, I've been awarded grants for streetscape improvements, for road improvements, for downtown rehabilitation efforts, for events, for tourism initiatives, for public relations, for fiber, and for building rehabilitation. So, I've had experience in a lot of those different venues, but I would say, when it comes to grant administration, one of the things that I take a lot of pride in is with a lot of the projects I've been involved with, you know, in addition to writing the grant, I'm also, I've also been with the grant from concept through completion. So, writing the scope of work, going out, procuring the vendor, meeting them on the job site, you know, doing weekly progress meetings, doing the reports to the regulatory agencies, and then closing it out with our financial team.
What experience do you have in managing and prioritizing the use of enterprise funds revolving accounts and free cash?
Certainly. So, you know, when it comes to our free cash in the town of Dartmouth, we really turn that around and we apply that to our capital budget. So, there's some set-asides that we put for healthcare costs or for other increases. You know, but with the town of Dartmouth, one of the things that I think we've been very beneficial is we've had a pretty consistent amount of free cash that we've been able to turn around and put back into our various departments and our various activities, which I kind of outlined further. Or outlined previously, my apologies.
All right. So, working cooperatively with all town departments is key to the town's success. Our Public Works Department includes water, sewer, solid waste, and recycling, fleet management, construction, and road maintenance. How would you work with the department and the board to prioritize projects?
Certainly. As I talked about in our last set of questions, one of the ways I've already helped with our Department of Public Works is getting them funds for their GIS asset management system and working with an engineering firm to build a scope of work for the needs of the department in the area of their road pavement program, sidewalks, safe routes to school. And in addition to that, you know, that tool will allow them in the future to put other asset classes in there so that they can track multiple things in terms of their condition, their location within the town, and give us a better inventory. You know, one of the things the Department of Public Works is working on is their comprehensive wastewater management plan. You know, I think working with the department on that timeline and what are going to be their funding needs in the future, and making sure that we budget appropriately or present that so that that good work can continue on. You know, in addition to that is, I guess, when you look at their operations over the next few months, I'm going to be very interested to see, you know, where their efficiency study will end up in some of those deliverables or some of those recommendations, and how can we incorporate those if there are, you know, short-term goals or long-term goals? And really, I'm interested to see that report, where can we partner with them and provide assistance? You know, the other area which a lot of communities have faced is recruiting and retention. And I think our Public Works Department has been hit especially hard in that area. And so, one of the things that I'm really proud that we're doing as a town right now is we have an RFP out for our classification and compensation study. So, over the last few months, we've been able to do some short-term fixes to try and attract more interest in some of these vacancies. But taking a look at our comparable communities and saying, are we competitive in this really tight job market? And how can we attract the best candidates so that as the DPW does plan, you know, these substantial improvements over time, how are we equipping them with, you know, the resources and the staff to get those things done?
What is your view on municipal-run utilities and services and infrastructure versus outsourcing?
Can you just give me an example, or if...
All right. Right now, the DPW runs the SMART program for trash. So, this would be going out to an outside company to run the program.
So, when it comes to the SMART program, it's difficult in the sense that we've had, we've had staff in the roles and there's been a lot of, of, I'm losing my train of thought on the word, but there's turnover. There's been a lot of turnover in the role. And I think with a program as large and as important as that one, when you're dealing with the size of, you know, an operation, is having to retrain staff every, you know, year or less is very difficult to continuity in those operations. So, you know, that's something where I haven't had the opportunity to talk to our director about that. But one of the things that I know we have talked about is retooling the position that we have currently and making a higher-grade position, because it does have more responsibility. And our hope is that, again, in the conversations I've had, is trying to make that into a position that more people would want to vie for and would see as a step up versus a lateral move from something that might not have as much responsibility. But outsourcing the operation, I would, before considering it, I would really want to see the cost benefit. And, you know, we do have staff who do those services now. So, if this operation was outsourced, where would those staff go? What would you have those staff do? And it might be that, you know, there's a more useful, you know, we could use them elsewhere and we could have a more efficient operation. But I would look forward to having that conversation with Tim and our Board of Public Works.
The aging population in Dartmouth is rising, highlighting a pressing need for increased services and support at the Council on Aging. The growing senior demographics necessitates proactive measurements to enhance the quality of life and well-being of our aging residents. How would you prioritize these services to support the aging population within our town and collaborate with local agencies and the town departments in addition to addressing the homelessness issue in town?
Certainly. So, when it comes to the Council on Aging, one of the things that we, as a town, have done over the past year is we conducted a master plan study. So, we brought in the stakeholders of the Council on Aging, their staff, the residents and visitors who attend, and tried to gauge where is the need both right now and where do you see the need going in the future? I've been out for a few weeks, but my understanding is that plan is finally complete. And I look forward to having that before the board here next week. But with that, it gives a very high-level overview in terms of where we think as a town we need to go. And it gives some very preliminary numbers in terms of dollars. But I see the master plan as a starting point in terms of where do we start the conversation as a town? And going forward, you know, whether, you know, you take on any of the recommendations or suggestions in that master plan report as a cluster, or as a phase, or individually, you know, I think it's something at that given time, again, bringing those stakeholders in so that, you know, whatever improvements and investment we do in the Council on Aging, it's money well-spent. And just from my involvement with it, I'm very pleased with where that plan turned out. And I think it was very useful even to the staff, you know, who are so engaged in what they're doing on a day-to-day basis down there that it really made them pause and think about, well, what's, what's that next step? And where's the need going to be for our aging population? When it comes to providing services to our aging population, the needs, it's not going down, it's going up. So, what are going to be the issues that we as a town need to either provide or be able to partner with different agencies on? So, I see our outreach coordinator, Matt Danzrow, who has been really on the ground, providing services day in and day out, getting our different residents in touch with these different resources available to residents. And in some cases, he's really helping guide them along. I think more of that level of service, that level of interaction with residents, and being able to have that as a resource, I think is something that's been desired based on what I've heard. And in addition to that, as it relates to coordinating, you know, other issues, you know, we have, which was started under the former administrator, was that community service outreach team. And, you know, there is that collaboration between departments, but, you know, long-term, is there an opportunity to add resources and additional personnel behind that? So, again, there's a little more time that could be spent exclusively on that, on that function and be able to take on additional programs and assistance programs.
The school department represents more than half the town's spending. How would you develop a relationship, be with the school department and town hall, for all intents and purposes, to promote their needs along with the ever-growing needs of the town overall?
Certainly. You know, similar to what I said earlier on, you know, one of the things I would really want to do is A, meet, but B, meet in their facilities. And I would really want to have a deep understanding, as much as them, as to the conditions and the needs of those different sites. You know, I think when it comes to capital planning, I think that's going to be increasingly important. When it comes to operations, I think having those conversations earlier on the budget is also going to be immensely important. You know, where are the needs of the students going? You know, what are, you know, the state regulations in terms of, you know, what do they need to have in terms of services that they offer? And really getting a deep understanding of the limitations that they face, I think will help in terms of where we can provide assistance. You know, the other area that I think as a town, we've, we provide assistance and we continue to look at ways is with regards to healthcare costs. And trying to, as much as possible, find opportunities for savings that benefit us as a town, because those costs are increasing, but also, at the end of the day, you know, those premiums and the out-of-pocket costs that those, our staff and those teachers face.
Land use permitting has become very complicated for owners and contractors alike. They must navigate the interests that town departments must administer as delegated by state or local legislative process. How will you ensure that the departments of the town are functioning as a collaborative unit and not in a vacuum to ensure interdepartmental matters are coordinated with land use permitting and will not lead to fractured functionality that would result in adverse relations with the public, fester in inefficiency in the departments, and create added costs to the town and the property owner?
Certainly. You know, I referenced earlier the land use group, and that would be something, as town administrator, I would want to have it on a consistent basis, monthly. You know, I think that is very timely in the sense that a lot of these applications we face usually have a 30-day deadline associated with them. Unless it's, you know, being advertised or something of that. But, you know, I think having consistent meetings of groups and, again, opportunities face-to-face where, you know, if there is resentment or if there is an issue or fractions, it could be aired out at that point in time and there could be a resolution. You know, when it comes to permitting, it's, it's a little challenging in the sense that, you know, a lot of the regulations are not from the same location that each of these departments face. And so, and they don't always work with each other. So inherently, you're always kind of fighting against the systems that have been put in place through no control of us as a town. And so with that is, well, how do you work around that? And so, I think one piece of it, and we continue to do this day-to-day, is how do we use the tool, which is our permitting system? how do we use the tool, which is our permitting system, to our advantage? Is there a notification that we can add that will loop in an individual department? Do we have to reorder permitting steps so that, you know, a department sees it sooner than they may have otherwise? Um, do we need to send out, um, you know, one example we had in our recent discussion was, you know, was there an opportunity to send a standard template form on different permit sets from other departments advising them that they need to contact XYZ department, you know, because they needed to do an application or they needed a separate permit? Um, I think that, as we said in those conversations, even that, it's a great start and it's something that we plan to do. But one of the things that we want to try and do is get to applicants and permit holders before they submit applications in. Because, you know, once the permit's in, we're on, we're on the clock. And applicants and permit holders, you know, they may not know the other requirements that they have. So as much as possible, trying to build that relationship, especially with people who come in consistently and send permits consistently in terms of what is our flow and who should they be reaching out to? Starting with our zoning, you know, depending on your location in town, do you need conservation? Do you need health depending on your, um, your operation? Um, I think that there is opportunities to provide that as a start out of the town administrator office. But in addition to that, I think that there's tools and resources out there that the town may be able to explore to help take some of that burden off of us. Um, but really at the end of the day, I think having, especially if it comes to, I'm frustrated with the situation, really trying to build an environment where you can talk to a person face-to-face and to resolve an issue and, and build consensus on where do you go from here and get buy-in to that plan. Cause, you know, it's, it's not worth being frustrated over.
What are the key, what are the key challenges regarding SMART growth facing towns similar to this one? And how would you address them?
So, I mean, I think it really starts with zoning in terms of, um, you know, developmentally, where is a town, you know, do we want to see growth and what does that look like? Um, you know, I think that that's something working with our elected planning board and our planning department on, I think is going to be crucial for the next few years, looking at our overlay districts and where is there opportunities to expand uses, um, reduce uses? I think some of it's going to fall on, um, you know, what regulations come out and what plan of action do we need to have to be ready to meet that challenge? Um, in addition to that, I think for SMART growth, really looking at the funding opportunities that are available now and, and that are going to be available in the future from the federal government, from the state government. Um, so that when we do change our zoning or when development opportunities do come to the town of Dartmouth, you know, we have the infrastructure to meet them. And we had a planner foresight to say, this is where we want it and we've already put the infrastructure in place so that you can plug and play. You know, I think when it comes to, um, SMART growth and as it goes to the economic development side is the more information we can put out there about the community, about the permitting process, the timeline, um, you know, the specific regulatory challenges or processes in any given area within the town. I think that it will show the developer, A, that we're operating in good faith and B, it will really give them an idea that we're serious about, hey, we're giving you this information because we want you to succeed in this area.
All right, now to our final category of questions, most specific to the position. Explain your understanding of relevant state laws and regulations impacting municipal operations.
Um, certainly. And I would say as the town administrator, a couple of the, um, the most involved Massachusetts laws we deal with is open meeting law. You know, working with our public body, both the select board as well as our other boards and commissions that we service. Um, and public procurement is another one, um, where we as a town, um, out of the town administrator office, as chief procurement officer, you know, we advise our staff on a day-to-day basis in terms of procuring services, goods, um, as well as contracts for our various projects within town. So, um, I am MC PPO certified. I am currently the town's acting chief procurement officer. And along with my co-interim, you know, we've been servicing the board in terms of public meeting notices, minutes, um, public records requests, um, you know, over the last several months.
How would you stay informed about emerging trends in local government and best practices?
Certainly. Um, you know, one of the things to the detriment of my email is really trying to sign up for every single either organizational resource, uh, state agency or, um, you know, government affiliation I possibly can. Um, I think that there's a lot of helpful resources, um, that we as a town have benefited from and that I've shared, um, to our staff when it comes to professional development opportunities, grant opportunities, networking opportunities, um, and also trying to build a relationship with our colleagues in neighboring communities as well. You know, I think, um, you know, one of the things that, um, as the challenges have become bigger and the dollars become bigger is, um, having regional collaboration when you're writing grants or when it comes to technical assistance or, um, when it comes to a specific issue. I see opportunities to learn from what other communities are doing in terms of what's successful and not successful. Um, in my short time with Dartmouth, I have been able to make connections um, with members of our neighboring community and other, uh, individuals, um, in assistant town administrative roles and town administrative roles, um, which just helps me really provide the best service I can.
I know you mentioned it, but we're going to part of the question, so.
Of course.
Do you currently hold any designations or any kind of credentials that are essential to the position?
Um, yes, so MC PPO certified, so, um, for RFPs, for us to be able to do RFPs as a community, you need to have a chief procurement officer, they have to be certified. I hold that certification for the town of Dartmouth. Um, I am also project management certified. So again, as I mentioned previously, I have extensive experience leading projects from concept through funding, bidding, out on the project site through completion. Is, in addition to that, I'm also HR certified. So one of the functions, um, that I served in my prior role as assistant town administrator for the town of Leicester was they did not have an HR department. So those functions were done out of the town administrator office and, um, the, that credential and what I learned from that helped me immensely in that role.
There's always more work than time to do it. So how would you go about organizing your day?
Uh, I, best laid plans. Uh, sometimes you go in the full intention of doing one thing and you don't do that. Um, I think it is really, when you look at any given issue of any given day, is, is there a deadline? Is there something that is time-sensitive? Is there something that a staff member or department head needs from me that's preventing them from doing what they need to do? And I, as much as possible, I really try to clear those off first, um, so that you're not waiting on me for anything. Um, when it comes to laying out my day, as I said earlier, I try as much as possible out of the foresight to put things in my calendar and think ahead for the week. Um, on any given day, trying to, um, again, keep my inbox low, keep slots available, um, for people to come in. It's really by the day, you have to take that approach, but.
What would you like us to know about you and your candidacy that wasn't, that? Wasn't asked, that wasn't in the questions?
Um, I, you know, as I said before, um, I'm pretty what you see is what you get. Um, I'm a straight shooter. I really like, I like to know the what, but I also like to know the why. Um, to my, some of my staffs chuckle, uh, a lot of the time it has, well, why do we do what we do? And some of the times we have the answer, oh, it's because it got approved here at a town meeting or, you know, it's a master, or other times it's, um, well, I don't know why we do what we do or I don't know why that's the process. So I, I kind of like to know a little bit because it helps me do a better job or see an opportunity for improvement. Um, you know, I would say as an internal candidate, I, you know, I'd just like to say, um, why I'm interested in the role is the fact that I have a great respect for our staff and I have a great respect for what the town of Dartmouth is looking to do and its master plans, what this board has talked about at meetings. And, um, I, my own personal beliefs align with that. And so, um, I'm invested, very invested.
All right, so basically that concludes the set of questions. So now what we're going to do is we're just going to open it up to the board members uh, for any kind of follow-up questions that you've asked, that's been asked or anything that you've stated. So this part generally is not going to be, um, exactly the same for every candidate, but, um, pretty close. So I'm going to go ladies first.
An unusual question. If I were to Google you, is there anything that would turn up that I should know about tonight?
Uh, I'm, if you Google me, first off, I don't think it'll say D. Christian unless it's, unless it's the press release. Uh, but for me, uh, you'll see a little bit of the work that I did with the town of Bristol. Um, some of the projects that I was able to help move forward, um, funding that the town was able to be awarded. Um, and really just my career progression from the town to the town of Dartmouth, or town of Bristol to the town of Dartmouth.
Thank you.
Mr. Tattelbaum.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Um, I'd like to talk a little bit about short versus long-term planning. I think it's, uh, we have great people in place to do these kind of work. On the other hand, I think we need to do a lot with long-term planning and, and you've been involved in that process as well. And I'd like to expound upon more in your view, uh, how we, that process would work and what we do going forward because, uh, you, as I said, you, you have been involved in it and we did discuss it and you did answer it. But, uh, I'd like to elaborate more on the process and how you think it's going to work for us for the next five or 10 or 40 years.
Certainly.
And the decisions, excuse me, versus, uh, always pigeonholing the short term because they have to be done versus how you decide to, to put together in a, a long-range plan?
Absolutely. Um, so I think first off, as a town, having that foresight that there are significant dollars and there's significant investment that we as a town will need to make in the future is critical. And, um, I think the work that's been done to date to bring eyes on that and attention to that, I think has been incredibly valuable. Um, with developing the plan, a lot of what we as a town have done to date has been conceptual in terms of starting to really identify those big-ticket items that aren't going to be in that short-term capital plan. It's not something that we can cover, um, with our free cash that we generate or through one grant or two grants. It's something that we'll most likely have to go out and borrow for. Um, you know, I think having to start better information in terms of the timeline when, um, some of these things are coming down the pike. So I know in the conversations that we've had, um, you know, some of them are long-range goals. If we look at that, um, as I mentioned earlier, that grading system for capital projects. Um, the recreation center as an example, is not something that we provide in terms of a current service, but it's an enhancement to the services that the town provides. So we, I think, re- grade that as a four. I think similar to, um, that, we have to look at all those other priorities, all those other projects that we've talked about and give them a grade and have consensus on where they fall. And I think by using the short-term capital grading system, I think that we should be able to build consensus relatively easily as to what are the key investments that we as a town need to make? And what are those that are either routine or, you know, maybe we need to prioritize one over the other based on where they fall in that ranking system? Um, I think when it comes to the overall cost, I think there's a little bit more that needs to be done um, for the projects in terms of how much those endeavors are going to cost the town of Dartmouth. So if it is going to be a new facility, um, you know, starting to lay the groundwork and starting to go out and get consultants or get experts that'll help us to better define what that scope of work's going to look like and what the cost is going to be to see it through to construction. So I think when you have that information, being able to place it appropriately on that timeline and then take it in relation to the other priorities that we have and when those things either need to get done or have been expressed that they want to get done on that timeline, to be able to say, yes, you know, this makes sense. And in addition to that, also be able to have definitive figures to go back to the residents and to this board and the general public to say, this is what that will cost out and what this will look like. Um, but throughout that process, I think having it be an open dialogue, have it be something where the community is, you know, similar to what's been done to date, engaged in it and as much information as we can get out there as we have it, I think is going to be, uh, essential when the time comes where decisions are being made of some of these projects where you could say, hey, I feel confident that all my questions have been answered on this. I know that the, the legwork's been done. I know why it's being done now. I know, you know, how much it's going to cost me. I know what the scope's going to look like. Um, that would be my approach.
Thank you. Stan?
Thanks. Um, thanks, Chris.
Stanley.
Coming up and, uh, you're interested in this job? Um, so talk about short-term. Um, i- if you get the job, um, what would you like to accomplish in the first 120 days? Your top three priorities? I have a follow-up that leads into that possibly after you answer that question.
Certainly. Um, you know, top three would be, I'd like to sit down with this board and have a conversation about strategic goals. Um, I know we've had our short-term goals over the last six months and I'm very pleased that we were able to make significant headway on most, if not all of them. But I would really want to start planning out for what our next year, year and a half looks like. And I think that timeline would be a good amount of time to have a few conversations on that. Um, in addition to that, having communications with this board is, um, having individual conversations. Um, one of the things that I, myself and my co-interim didn't really have the opportunity to do was get an idea of your communication preferences. You know, are there improvements that we can do in terms of, you know, what we send you on a day-to-day basis? How do you want to be notified of things? Um, s- small improvements, but I think over time will compound. Um, communication with the board and I'll also call that under that same flag, having communications with our staff. Um, I know I've been away for a few weeks on medical leave. Um, but I would really want to get myself up to speed on the activities of our departments and where the projects left off when, when I left here, um, earlier in the fall. Um, the second thing is we are, even though we're FY '25, we're already, we need to talk about FY '26 in terms of budget preparation. Um, and coming back, uh, even next week, those conversations are going to start to happen very soon um, with our finance committee, with the select board, with the school committee. And having conversations as to where we as a town want to go for FY '26, I think is going to be crucial over the next month so that we can give that guidance to department heads. Um, the last thing, and I mentioned it earlier, is, uh, we have a classification and compensation study that we have out to RFP right now. Um, getting that awarded and beginning that study is going to be important because next year, um, we enter collective bargaining with all of our different unions. And so having that data and being able to, um, plan accordingly for the next fiscal year and over the next several fiscal years is going to be, um, you know, it's going to really hang on getting that study done quickly and effectively.
So, in a follow-up, um, short-term again.
Yes.
You mentioned 40B. So we have a 40B project, three years old.
Yes.
We still don't have a shovel on the ground. The amount of money, taxes money, that we're losing every day, I would expect the town administrator, the next town administrator, to be part of that, to make sure that the 2025, that they put a shovel on the ground there, and things get going. Um, it's, it doesn't make sense to me.
Um, if, if I could just provide a follow-up on that. I know, um, you know, in my time in interim, uh, the interim town administrator, and assistant town administrator, I know that this project has been in the queue for quite a long time. Um, there are a lot of regulatory elements to it. In addition to that, um, because it's through the 40B process, and there's the comprehensive permit, there is a lot of prerequisites that were needed. You know, it is my full intention, not just for 2025, but coming back, is to make sure that all of our departments are working in sync to get that project moving forward. And I think the best thing that we can do is make sure that when it comes to all of the backup documentation on that project, we have it catalog, categorized and cataloged, so that regardless of if it's me, or director, anyone in the seat, if they're not there, our staff know exactly where it is and where it needs to go.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Chris, can you hear me well enough?
I can hear you.
All right. Um, I hope your wife and, uh, your little one are doing well.
Thank you so much.
So, um, thank you for accommodating me. I, uh, I didn't wanna get up, I have to get up and move around, so I didn't wanna distract. Uh, not using the video was not a, um, a statement about, uh, about the interview or anything like that. I just had to move around. Um, couple of quick questions for you. Um, the client surveys, you remember the client surveys that we had sent out?
I do.
Uh, I'm, I'm just wondering, i- if you gleaned anything from those, and if you did, um, wha- what changes, um, uh, did you want to employ to kind of mitigate some of the issues that were brought up in, in those, uh, those surveys? Anything in particular?
So, uh, and I guess, for the surveys, um, when I first became assistant town administrator for the town of Dartmouth, that is something that I worked on. Um, getting out those surveys, and, um, handing them out, or making them available readily at any of our different departments, so that you could scan it, you could take a physical copy, um, and get a, um, an honest take about their interaction on that day, that time. And so, um, if my memory serves me correctly, we got around 50 over the course of several months. Um, it's obviously since dwindled down since it originally came out. Um, but I think when it comes to processes and timelines, I think, um, again, working with our land use departments on those efforts to try and make the system work better for the town, and better for the departments, is something that I would, and I continue to spend a lot of my time on. I think when it comes to, um, just general interactions with our staff, um, you know, trying to get a better idea of where are the hiccups, or where are the challenges, kind of as I mentioned earlier, is, is there something that, you know, constituent isn't understanding? Is it something about our process? Is it something that we can help, um, improve? Or do we need to provide better materials, and resources, and guidance? Um, I think that's where I would go with what has been said previously. But, um, I know we talked a little bit earlier about how I'd work with constituents, and that's something I could see us doing, again, in the future, as needed. Um, and it might not have to be as long, or it could be longer, um, you know, but trying to, at any given time, get a pulse about, you know, what are residents experiencing when they're coming in, or where are there opportunities for improvement.
Okay. And, and to piggyback on that, Chris, the, um, if I gave you the magic wand, right, and you were able to either, uh, given the budgets that we're gonna be dealing with in the next few years, uh, if you were able to eliminate, um, any type of expense, or, uh, or a process, um, do you have any specifics, anything specifically that you, you, when you, you get in a position, you'd say, you know what, I really, that, that's gonna be a top priority. I'd really like to make a change there?
So... A pro- so an expenditure or a process? I'm, I'm sorry, I just, uh...
Expenditure, a process, uh, if you had the magic wand to change it or eliminate it, um, in the experience that you've had, and the problems that you've seen in town, uh, is there any, anything in, uh, top of mind that, uh, you'd say, you know what, I'd really like to work with, you know, with department head on trying to eliminate that, or try and fix that issue?
So, I think, one of the things that I would want to get a little bit of more process around is our various projects and our long-term goals. And one of the things that I had explored, and we've been piloting internally, is a project management program, something that you could, uh, you know, customize, and really build out to service departments, as well as the leadership and organization as a whole. Um, I think a lot of times, there are, um, you know, there's different projects, and, you know, we talk about kind of what happens on a day-to-day basis in the town of Dartmouth. You know, you may have a project, and you might take an action on it, and then it might leave your desk, and then, you know, it might not come up again in terms of correspondence, or a meeting in, from a month. Having resources and tools readily available, so that I don't necessarily have to take time out of the day to get someone on the phone, or send an email, wait for an email back, as to what's the status of that project. Um, I think that's something I wanna explore further, and I, what I'd like to do is I'd like to take the work that we're doing as a town, and I wanna match it with the strategic goals that we have already outlined in our master plan document. So I think, you know, we should give credit to ourselves for the work that we have been doing, 'cause it's not that we haven't been doing anything with the master plan. I think it's very difficult when we have so much activity going on, that we're not, at that point in time, taking it back and saying, wait a minute, we said, we, we said we wanna do this, and we did do it. So we should, you know, give credit to ourselves there. Um, I hope that answered it, but that's kind of an area that I wanna focus in more on.
Thank you, Sean.
Okay. All right, so, come to the end. Uh, you've answered our questions completely, um, honestly, candidly, and we all appreciate that. So I'm gonna afford you the chance to question us, or provide you, provide with a closing statement. Or is yours?
So I would just say, as a closing statement, and I alluded to it earlier, is, um, you know, thank you for the opportunity to be here, um, and for the opportunity to serve you as your co-interim town administrator over the last six months. Um, you know, since I've taken that role, uh, very early on, I wanted this to be a time where we as a town could continue to make progress on these goals, while we're going through this very difficult transitional process. Um, you know, that time, as well as, you know, long before that, you know, being a town administrator is something that professionally I've worked for, and wanted to work for. Um, and I see no greater community to hopefully take that next step than here for the town of Dartmouth. I've been here, I know the staff, I know what we have, I, I know the issues that we face, and I wanna be part of the solution as the town administrator. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for applying. Thank you for coming, thank you for sitting there, 'cause sometimes it's very difficult to, especially not knowing what the questions are, and the, the thinking off the cuff. Um, it is our intent to interview three more individuals, one more tonight, two more tomorrow, and then give us some time to cogitate over the weekend. And it is the intent of us to make a decision on Monday night at our regular meeting. So, uh, with that, thank you very much for, for showing up. Um, thank you for applying, and, uh, we'll see you very shortly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris. All right, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess, a little break. Our next appointment is at 6:30, so we'll be right back. All right, our second part of the interview is with Bridget Allman of Warwick, Rhode Island. Bridget, I just want to just briefly introduce yourself.
I'm Bridget Allman. I have just about thirty years of experience between finance, private and municipal school experience. I've been the CFO for the city of Fall River for the past two and a half years. And prior to that, I was the Director of Finance and Operations for a regional school district in Rhode Island. And prior to that, I worked in private equity finance.
All right, I'm Sean McDonald, the Chairman of the Select Board, and we'll go.
I'm Heidi Silverbrooks. I'm a member of the board.
Hi.
Stan Mickelson.
Dave Tittlebaum.
Nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
And Chris O'Neil is home right now, and right now it's just Chris O'Neil on the screen. Oh, there he is. All right, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a set of questions that we're asking every single person. And that should take roughly forty-five to sixty minutes.
Okay.
After that, the board members will have follow-up questions based on the responses that you gave. And it could vary from candidate to candidate, depending upon, you know, what you say. After that, I gotta use my notes here. Even though it's big, I still need my glasses. And then after that, there'll be a, you know, you can have questions of us, or you can provide a closing statement, so.
Okay.
Are you all set?
Sure.
All right, let's rock and roll. So candidates with proper qualifications and experience are very important. But the ability to communicate and to be inclusive with staff, volunteers, vendors, and of course, the residents will make the real difference. So describe your leadership style and goals to achieve success in this position, and how you motivate and empower your team to achieve these goals.
So one of the first things I did in Fall River was develop a municipal calendar for us that crosses all of the departments that I oversee, which directly was Treasury, Collectors, Purchasing, Auditors. And we have incorporated into that not just financial concerns that we have to do. We, as, as things come up, we keep adding to that. In addition to that, I started trying to do like succession planning by like training the trainer and then following it through and cross-training among staff members. Started initiating a lot of training and support for them that, you know, they prior, didn't have. Because I found that like the stronger the team is, that's, it only just helps me out as well. So I have a very open-door policy. All my employees know they can come talk to me about, just about anything. And, you know, I had an employee that came to me and wanted to, you know, learn another role. And we did help her incorporate into like moving and like learning that role. So I'm, I foster that environment of growing and learning. I mean, I think I developed that working in the school department for a long time. And I also really like to keep developing. So we even have interns that come work for us every summer. And actually, one of them I was able to keep on through. She comes once a week right now.
How, how will you be visible and accessible as the town administrator and available to staff and not just department heads?
So currently now, I mean, I'm available to all, I mean, staff stop by my office throughout the day now to ask for my advice on different things. And it's not just department heads. Sometimes it's clerks that work under department heads. So I've always had that very visible. I go out and visit departments and talk to staff to see like what the issues are and like what concerns and how we can help them. I really think that municipal government should be more customer service oriented. And we really foster that in, within my department heads. I mean, under my direct support that report to me, we stress that and we help a lot of departments. I mean, so I'm always out visiting and talking to many people throughout the town hall.
Over the past few years, staffers can voice their concerns regarding the content of staff meetings with the town administrator. And how do you envision developing the conduct in conducting such meetings? Because there's always minor issues that come up, such as, you know, the hours worked or the use of town vehicles, customer service expectations. So how would you address these types of issues before they become larger, larger problems?
Well, that's part of having constant communication. I mean, I think if you, you don't wait to, for a problem to blow up, you have dialogue that's happening routinely. And if you don't have that, then that's when things become bigger problems.
With staff in town hall and other locations in town, how do you ensure effective communication with your team? And what strategies do you have or will you use to ensure that all team members feel included and valued?
So I would have weekly meetings with certain department heads. And we would always have an agenda. And I would, so routinely now, I meet on a minimum of a quarterly basis with police and fire department chiefs to discuss their budget, concerns, obviously overtime is a big concern. And, and I routinely, I, I think, I probably meet with the Director of Public Works, which is our Director of City Operations, if not daily, at least every other day. So I'm constantly meeting with department heads. And my employees are always, you know, included in different areas that they would be helpful in. But I have a weekly finance meeting every Tuesday. And it's, you know, we have our agenda, but then it's like, what else is, is coming up? What other concerns do you have?
Working in the city of Fall River, and this probably, well, it just happens everywhere. How would you handle a difficult department head or an elected official?
Well, that happens quite often. It's just, it's, so each person that you'd encounter has a different personality, so it would just depend. I just try to stay calm and really, so a lot of times with an elected official, it's a, they just didn't understand or they don't, so it's really like, I always say, I'm welcome to come in. It doesn't have to be at a, at a, you know, city council meeting, because sometimes that's not always comfortable. So I have a couple of counselors that have come in and they talk to me and I help walk them through things. So that way, they understand it without feeling embarrassed or not wanting to ask certain questions. Department heads, luckily, I have, most of my department heads are really good right now. We have a couple. That's when the city administrator and I kind of work together to, you know, work through that relationship of the issues that we're, we're facing.
Okay. How, how do you foster effective communication and collaboration between town staff, elected officials, and the community? And if you can, share an example.
So we send out, we have to do this quarterly budget report. And I, so what I'll do is I'll reach out. The day that it gets sent down to the, to the council, I send out an email asking if, you know, once they go through it, if they have any questions. You can email me, you can call me, you can come in and talk about it. So I try to keep those lines of communication. And I do have, there's a couple of counselors that very freely, you know, talk and then those other ones that don't. As far as department heads, you know, sometimes we have to set up meetings, but most of the time, they'll say, hey, do you have a few minutes? And we, I have a pretty open door. I mean, you can reach out to anybody that I work with. And they'll let you know that, you know, if I'm busy, I'll tell them I'll get back to them, but I make time for people.
Explain the approach you take in incorporating community feedback into town or into basically municipal planning activities or initiatives.
Can you repeat that question?
So basically, how, how do you, how would you approach taking feedback from the community in basically municipal initiatives?
So right now, those, that type of feedback comes through the city counselors and then through the mayor, to me. So we end up, we have, you know, a meeting up with the mayor and then those initiatives of, you know, where they want to focus on as far as like budget priorities. That right now, because of the, the way, the type of government it is, comes directly through the mayor's office. But there has been some suggestions that the city counselors will say, you know, we'd like to see this or can you add this to, you know, to your presentation or so forth? And so I don't have a problem adding or amending things.
Right. As with any municipality, we're in the business of customer service. How do you see getting the message out to all departments and to the staff members saying, yes, this is our business?
So I think that's part of, you know, when I would first start is my expectations. And so, for example, like our expectation before we do a tax title taking is our Collectors Department will, so they'll start calling. So this is just one example. So we have, and I'm not sure if everybody's aware of the tax title. So that's before like we're gonna start the process of it's going over to the Treasury Department where, you know, that we would start possibly foreclosing. But, so for example, in Fall River, we started with a thousand parcels of back taxes. And we start making phone calls and, and calling residents. And of that thousand, we only advertised a hundred. And we scrub through the data, like we don't, I mean, I did look at your tax title taking.
We're much smaller.
It's much smaller, but again, I, there's like some, there's some small, really small amounts that I don't feel that should have been advertised. You know, like six dollars and forty-one cents, eleven, you know. I, I, so I just think that's part of the customer service of where you really should be looking at the data. You know, I'm very familiar with Munis, I'm very familiar with the issues that, the discrepancies between one report, you should have, they should match, but with Munis, it doesn't always match. So it's really important to be like, you know, not just pressing a button and sending something and really looking at it. And it's also about picking up the phone. It takes a few minutes. And, you know, somebody, you don't know why they didn't pay that small amount. So I just, I, we really foster and promote customer service. And that's really, I, I mean, I don't like calling and getting like a robot on the phone, so I don't think anybody else wants to do that. And usually when they're calling town hall or city hall, it's generally because they need something and it's not like, you know, so I really like push that and it's an expectation of mine.
So budgeting and maintaining the budget is an effort by many in the town, but the town administrator is seen as the leader. So what experience do you have in developing and implementing long-term strategic plans for our municipality?
So just in Fall River alone, I mean, I had that, I had that experience. And at the regional school district, I mean, I had a, you know, just about nine years of doing it at, at that level. I mean, prior to that, I was in private industry. So I did it when I was a controller for a broker, for a foreign exchange broker. So I have probably over fifteen years of developing long-term planning and, and budgets.
So with that, how would you prioritize and manage the multiple complex projects with basically a very tight deadline?
So you start with a deadline and you work backwards in your calendar. And you have to, and you plan accordingly, and that's what I do now. So I, I look at when I, what our deadlines are. And we, like, for example, when we had to, to get our tax rate certified. So we planned, okay, this is when we can, we can work with our consultant to, to get the tax bills done. We planned that date. We called, you know, I called DOR and said, this is when we plan to do it. We went and planned our tax recap hearing, so the city clerk and we went to advertise it. And we made sure we got it done. And we did. And I mean, our bills are already printed. We have twenty-one thousand bills that go out and they are printed in, in the envelopes and waiting to be mailed the last week of December.
I'm sure everybody's happy about that. What are your, what are your key considerations when allocating funds for capital improvement projects?
Well, there's never enough money. But, so it depends on what the size of the project. So whether it's going to be something where you're going to either set aside some funds every year in your operating budget to pay for it, if you're gonna be doing, if it's gonna need to be a bonding project or if it's gonna, is there some free cash that's available? Currently, I've built up the stabilization fund and the plan. I mean, I don't know what's gonna continue to happen, but the plan was to build that, set seventeen million, get it to twenty-five million. Talking to the investment analysts, I feel they project we can make probably around eight hundred thousand dollars a year. Just, and then be able to use that investment earnings to buy like the small capital projects. I mean, that's just one idea that I implemented.
How would you handle a situation where there's a significant budget shortfall that is discovered mid-year?
So we would have to look at what our, what our receipts are coming in at and we'd have to come back and ask for an appropriation, because you still need to appropriate your expenditures, even if you're gonna have additional revenues coming in. So we would have to make an appropriation adjustment at a town, at appropriate town meeting time.
Okay. So with that, how would you approach, approach identifying cost-saving measures within the budget while maintaining essential services? And doing that, describe your process in developing and presenting a comprehensive annual budget.
So I feel that my experience in private industry helped me come into municipal government by, I mean, in private industry, we have to find efficiencies and we're, you know, so I was able to bring some of those efficiencies into government and I feel that it's, you know, work smarter, not harder. So when you have to prioritize, sometimes you have to find another way to get things done. So we've been able to, for example, implement some software that's able to take the, where I don't have the personnel that they used to have, like we used to have a grants manager that just managed grants. So we, that got eliminated from the budget before I got there. So for example, now we're implementing a custom, a software. I mean, we have well over a hundred grants. So trying to monitor all those and not be brockton and overspend our budget. Have to cover it and not be, I mean, there's other, many other. And I know how it happened, so, and we're building dashboards. So that way, it'll be quicker and easier to kind of take a look at the overall picture of things. But that was one way of providing an efficiency and getting a job done when I don't have personnel to do it. So I kind, I do look for those. I mean, I have a few other ideas that I'm working on with, looking at AI to where the invoices would come in to automatically get applied to requisitions, which would save time for, you know, a clerk entering that. They are able to, you know, maybe help do something else that's a little more, you know, another need that there's, they can help with.
So describe your position on the balance between environmental, natural resource protection, economic growth, municipal revenues. So how do you achieve that balance?
So it's really, so it's not, there's a story behind those numbers and you have to start understanding like what makes up those numbers and what's coming down. So paying attention to what's happening at the state level, what's happening at the federal level, looking at, you know, the interest rates. I mean, we were able to take advantage and invest money and buy treasuries two years ago. Well, now the, the environment's changing, so the interest, the, we were able to capitalize and make a lot of money, really that Fall River's never seen before. And now, just paying attention to that and realizing that, you know, the cash flow, the door, the ARPA money that's going out the door and seeing what you're left with and say, okay, now I don't have that in my budget. You know, paying attention to the cannabis. And we knew that that host agreement, so we, I amended that budget right at the tax recap hearing when we knew that was going away, you know, a year and a half ago. So it's, that's unfortunately, you have to, it's paying attention and staying in tune. And so I attend, you know, I don't just go to government finance officer meetings. I go to mass collector treasures meetings. I talk to, you know, our vendor. I, I talk to a lot of people to try to stay abreast of that, because the landscape changes so much. And so trying to always understand what's the story that makes up the numbers and where is it going? And so that's, that's how I, that's how I do it. And I've been pretty successful.
You mentioned grants, so what is your experience in securing grants?
So currently, I don't have to, I don't write any grants, but I have, when I was at the school department, the regional department, I did help write grants. And was, and actually during COVID, assisted in writing a grant and coming up with a plan to build. A lot of people were putting in tents outside to hold classrooms. And, and I said, okay, this is like, they're gonna blow over, like this is crazy. So we wrote a grant and put, we decided to put in something, a structure that could be an outdoor classroom, but it would be something that would go beyond COVID. So we built a pavilion that had a screen that, that was an outdoor capable that would come up and down with a projector that they could see during the daylight. And so it's something that can be multi-use, but we put, we built a grant for something that was gonna last beyond, you know, that horrible year, so.
What experience do you have managing and prioritizing? What experience do you have managing and prioritizing the use of enterprise funds, revolving funds and free cash?
So that's my world. So I mean, I got, we have an EMS enterprise fund that generates, um, pretty good, I mean, they've kind of reimagined what EMS does. It's not just, you know, picking up in an emergency. Uh, we have water sewer enterprise funds. They do not have a sanitation enterprise fund anymore, but they did kind of have that in the past and and free cash. Um, I would tell you that we have been very successful in our free cash certifications for the last three years.
Good. All right. Working cooperatively with all town departments is a key to success in any town or municipality. So our public works department includes water sewer, solid waste and recycling, fleet management, construction and road maintenance. So how would you work with the department and board to prioritize projects?
So I wouldn't overstep and say that I know more than them because I don't, but I work currently with those departments now. Um, and it's, you know, understanding like chapter ninety funds, what's available, what you can use it for. You know, going over with what they are prioritizing is, you know, an absolute need, but that, it's really not just me helping decide that. That's like your planning, your engineering, your D P W director. And it's all coming together and then how, how are we going to pay for it is really the next question. So just again, routinely having open dialogue with them in open meetings.
I guess they weren't kidding about the wind, that's for sure.
Yeah.
What is your view on municipal-run utilities and services and infrastructure versus outsourcing them to private?
As far as like sewer? Like, is that what we're?
Garbage.
Garbage. So I think that we, we've kind of hit where outsourcing things may not be the cheapest way to go. Because I'm watching the, the cost of sanitation, like in Fall River and New Bedford. And then I, I've looked at, I've studied what like Providence is paying. And I look at some municipalities that brought it in-house. And so you really need to do the math of like the total cost of, you know, salaries, all your fringe benefits, your pension costs. And then what you're going to pay an outside contractor. And it's, right now, I think a lot of that was outsourced years ago because it was, let's not worry about the pension, we'll get that off. Won't be our problem. But now those costs have come up so much that you're almost at that tipping point of it may not be the cheapest way to go. But you also have to be able to get the staff. So like, for example, um, most, a lot of sewer, um, are, are outsourced because there's an expertise there that there's not enough. There's a labor shortage of that kind of staffing and to, to be able to do that. So I think you have to weigh that is the cost and plus do, are you going to have the expertise to be able to do it?
So the aging population in Dartmouth is on the rise, highlighting a pressing need for increased services and support at the council and agent. So the growing senior demographic necessitates proactive measures to enhance the quality of life and well-being of our aging residents. How would you prioritize the services to support the aging population within our town? Collaborate with local energies and the town departments and also to address the homelessness and issue in our town? Yes, it is.
Well, so I did, I mean, I did read your master plan and I do see that, you know, you're, I think it's in, uh, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty, the population, the aging population over sixty-five has gone up about ten percent. And that's, that's happening across everywhere. So I think it's really working with your director on your council and aging to find out what are the needs because, you know, the needs here are probably, could be a little bit different than like, say, Fall River. And then working with her and to say like, okay, can we, can we, you know, get some grant money? Can we use some budget money? Can we try to like pull resources to, to accomplish them? I don't, as far as the homeless issue, I don't have an answer to that. I mean, there's, I've sat through a lot of city council meetings. And there's been a lot of smart people that have been involved and had, no, I don't know that anybody has the right full answer yet. But I do know that, um, I think part of it is, you know, they've moved towards putting these ADUs and allowing like some additions to family members, you know, live separately but together to save. I think that's, you know, something that was happening in the seventies and the eighties that I see coming back. And I did see, when I read your master plan, like looking at like rezoning in certain areas and overlay districts. So I think that needs to be really looked at.
So the school department represents more than half the town spending. How would you develop a relationship with the school department and the school committee to promote the needs along with the ever-growing needs of the town overall?
So working, coming from schools, I have a deep respect for education. And it's, I mean, it's important. I can, I can talk, you know, for hours about the skills gap and, and reimagining education and, and doing things. So I have a respect for, for schools and I think meeting with schools and working with them, um, I can speak their language. And, you know, it's, but there's only, there's, there's one pot of money. So, you know, we got to be able to, to work together and I think it's part of like, okay, what do you need this year? And maybe next year you, you know, it's, it's really trying to say, okay, maybe this department gets this this year, but then that next year, this department's going to get this need met. And it's really, you know, people have to share and that's just what it comes down to. It's not just all about like, you have to get department heads that are, you know, not just all about me, me, me. It has to be, you know, we're all working together. We're one team. So I, I do, I mean, I would regularly meet with, with the school department, with the superintendent and the, um, assist, the assistant superintendent of finance. I think regular meetings, minimum monthly would, would happen.
Great. Land, excuse me. Land use permitting has become very complicated for owners and contractors alike. They must navigate the interests that town departments must administer and, and delegated as delegated by state or local legislative process. How will you ensure that the departments of the town are functioning as a collaborative unit and not in a vacuum to ensure interdepartmental matters are coordinated with land use permitting and will not lead to fractured functionality that will result in adverse relations with the public? Fester inefficiency of the departments and create added costs to the town and the property owner?
So I'm not sure. I think you guys used to have like kiosk for like permitting?
We have, we have a permitting process and there are kiosks. They can do it at home or they can do it at the kiosk, um, here. Or they can do it at the window.
So I think it's definitely making sure that there's an employee there that can help them because I could see where that would be frustrating. I mean, we've, we have online permitting now, um, which just kind of helps it move through the queue because you also have to make sure that there's no outstanding taxes owed or fees owed on the property. So right now, um, it's just having a queue of, you know, the steps to make sure that it all works, but I can see where, people like to do it online, but online doesn't always work. So you have to make sure there's like a person there that can actually answer the questions and work with them. But I think it's very much, I mean, your collector's office has to be, you know, working in conjunction with your permitting office.
So what are the key challenges, organic smart growth facing municipalities similar to this one? And how would you address them?
So what do you mean by smart growth?
Well, I guess basically using the master plan and taking, taking it and using it in developing, um, developing ways to produce affordable housing, to reduce, um, maintaining, you know, historical significance. Keeping the neighborhood structure, but yet still, you know, there's only so much land that you can build upon in the town. We're not fully, we're not, we're not there yet. But also protecting the resources that the town has, water, you know, um, recreational, you know, so how, how do you approach?
So I do believe, I mean, I know you just hired a new planner. I believe that I would have to work very closely with the planner um, and having conversations and ideas that would then be brought back to the select board. Because really it's your vision of, you know, my job would be to, to bring you, um, options and ideas. And then it's really, um, the select board's decision of like where, how we're going to move forward to do these things. So I, I don't have an answer for you for exactly what that would be because I would definitely have to work with your planner.
Well, I mean, that's very logical, that's for sure. Our final categories of questions are more specific to the position. So can you explain your understanding of the relevant state laws and regulations that impact municipal operations?
So I am, hold on. So I, I currently work in dealing with all of the D O R regulation, it's very dry. D O R regulations and, um, and I work with our attorneys to understand like, you know, can we, can we operate this way or move forward in this way? And I would continue to do that. I mean, Massachusetts has, um, a very prescribed set of way of doing things that other states don't have. In some ways it's great because, you know, you have a definitive roadmap, but in other ways it is a little more complicated in Massachusetts to get things done. But that's, you know, I've been working very closely with D O R. I have, you know, conversations routinely. I have no problem if I don't understand something, picking up the phone and finding out. And again, I work with our attorneys to make sure that, you know, do I understand this regulation the way I think I do? And
How would you stay informed of emerging trends in local government best practices?
So that's where I continue. So I go to, um, G F O A meetings. I go to the mass collector treasures. I go to M M A meetings. Um, I have, you know, made a lot of connections with colleagues throughout Massachusetts that I talk to routinely to see, you know, what's going on there. Like, for example, we had a huge increase in our, um, motor vehicle excise tax. And it was a very large increase. It was unusual. So we reached out to, um, other communities to kind of see like what their increases were and, you know, what was going on. And I, and I reached out to D O R. Unfortunately, we don't have the exact statistics because they won't see the new data until January. But again, it's like talk, it's like, it's just, you have to build relationships and we do that and we talk, and I talk to, you know, several municipalities to see what's going on in there. Because if it's happening there, it's happening here, you know, so.
Do you have, currently have any designations or credentials that are essential for this position?
So I do believe, I mean, so I'm a certified business manager, um, as far as like on the school side in Rhode Island. It's very similar to the Massachusetts. I am also a Title IX certified investigator and civil rights investigator. I have a lot of very heavy H R experience, um, and I'm also M C P P O certified. So I feel like all of those credentials, um, really would help me, all those disciplines would help me be a very successful town administrator.
There's always more work than time to do it. So how do you go about organizing your day?
Well, you start out with a plan and it never happens, so. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, again, it's like having like really, having a team, like a really good team and, and being able to delegate things. And then take care of, you know, the more, the most emerging thing that has to happen. So I, I mean, I get it done. I, you know, I haven't missed a deadline, so.
So let me ask this last question. Uh, what would you like the panel to know about you or your candidacy that wasn't included in the questions?
So I think, um, again, I have strong finance, but I also, I mean, I did do ten years of public accounting, so I have like that side of the, you know, understanding like auditing and the internal workings and financial statements. But prior to that, I mean, I was a very disciplined teenager. I mean, I started flying airplanes when I was in junior high and got my pilot's license by the time I was eighteen. So I did that all through, you know, going to school, playing sports and was involved in civil air patrol, went to college. So I think that just leads, shows my character of discipline and, you know, I have high expectations of myself. And I feel that that translates into, you know, the people that work around me.
All right. So that, that concludes the standard set of questions. So what we're going to do now is we're going to open up to the board to see if they have any questions that relate to what you've already answered. And so we will start off with Mr. Tattlebaum.
Thank you. I have two, I have two questions. They're not that long, but, um, you worked in the Coventry and the Foster Gloucester area and the schools? And that's in the area where you live in Warwick?
That's actually about, so Foster Gloucester is about forty-five minutes north of where I live. You know, no school Foster Gloucester. So I'm actually, so if, if you're trying to understand like how close I am to here or?
Uh, well, that's true, but more importantly, uh, was it, were those two, there were town governments or city governments in both cases?
So the, uh, the town of Coventry was town, town meeting. Voice vote meeting too. And the regional school district, I actually, um, worked with two towns. So I had to have go to, you know, two separate meetings with, and work with two separate towns. And then we had a town financial meeting for the regional district that was completely, you know, separate.
So you were involved in three town structures?
Well, basically, yeah.
Between, okay. And that was, and you're in, you're still in Warwick now?
I, yeah, I live on the north end of Warwick.
Okay. Second question, should I wait or can I ask it now? Okay. You talked about, um, grant writing and how in, in the city, you don't have a grant writer, but you, you talked about software that either was there.
Sorry.
Yeah. Well, maybe you have grant writers, but you talked about software that was either there before you got there or you were involved in it, that's managing, um, over a hundred grants. Could you elaborate on that a little?
Yeah, so we have a grant writer. We don't have a grant manager to manage like the financial piece of it. The software was not there. So when I got there, it was, there was no like, you know, master list of grants and like current grants and I mean, there's grants that, that go calendar year, there's grants that go multi-year, there's grants that go fiscal year, there's grants that go, you know, eighteen. So I was like, how, how, how are you tracking this? So that's when I started, um, looking into software and then I ended up working with Clifton Larson Allen, who was developing a software that was more geared towards municipalities and for them, for auditing purposes. So when they come out to do their single audit, it's a lot easier for them. So we were, it's not complete, like we're, we're in the process now of, like we've, it's been built and now we're filling in the data. And so the plan is, is to have all of that financial data, all of the documents in one place that'll carry over multi-year and also be able to upload the financial data so there'll be a dashboard so you can quickly look at, you know, is this seventy-five percent spent? Is it zero percent? Have, is this a, you know, what type of brand is it? Is it funded ahead of time? Is it a drawdown grant? I mean, there's multiple different types and it's, when you have that many and that many variables and you have all your school grants, you know, and obviously if the school overexpends their grants, it's the general fund that has to make it up. So that's when I said, okay, this is, we can't do this, like.
So is it, is it grounds-up custom software or you've got a piece in?
So they'd already, they had the general framework built, but then they're customizing it for us.
Going to work?
It's, I mean, it's working now. It's, you know, it's not fully like, you know, yeah, I mean, you, there's a lot of stateful like departments to get on board.
It's a real accomplishment for the city to have that.
I'm sorry, what?
It's a real accomplishment for the city to have that.
Once it's up and done, yes, it will be. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I've got a couple of things. Curious, um, what is the bond rating of Fall River?
So the bond rating is, um, double A two and they, last year they upgraded to stable for the first time since twenty-eleven. And there was after, when I had my Moody's call, there was talks of as long as the conservative budgeting and addition, you know, free cash continued to be in that where it has, it has developed to be, they always talk of them upgrading it higher for the first time.
What is our bond rating in the town department?
You have I think it's triple A.
All right. My question, um, if you were to get this job for ninety to one hundred and twenty days, start out and enter the, and, and the ground running, as they would say, what would be your three top priorities?
So my first priority would be obviously getting to know and meeting and introducing myself, you know, to all the department heads and working with them. Really working with the, um, finance director treasurer to get a handle of the budget and the, like, all the intimate details that you can't just tell by looking at it, you know, from an overview. and the, like, all the intimate details that you can't just tell by looking at it, you know, from an overview. Um, look at what's happening in your collector's department to see how we can improve customer service there and really getting to understand, you know, what your priorities are so that I can then start working on those priorities.
Okay, so last, this ties into this, this, uh, the priorities, my priority on top of it all. We have a forty B project that's three years old. We don't have a shovel in the ground yet. We need to, we need to find ways to find affordable housing. What better way would there be other than that forty B project like that? But we still haven't got a shovel in the ground. What would you do to get this project moving?
I mean, is there, has there been a plan developed already for this project? So is it, is it, I mean, what's the barrier? Is it funding, is it?
There's no funding barrier.
Is there a space barrier? Like, I, I have to understand what the barriers are to?
It's a lot of bureaucracy, you know, because it is a forty B.
Okay, yeah.
It's not just local requirements, it's above and beyond. But three years into this project, millions of dollars we're losing in, in taxes. Should be a priority for the next town administrator.
Yeah, so, I mean, understanding that, I would have to look at what, you know, what the barriers are, what, what the bureaucracy is and then start looking at, you know, if I understand what those are, then we can start, you know, educating to address those concerns. And maybe it's just, is it fear of what, what it's gonna bring? You know, for some people, I, I mean, I, I would have to understand that so that I could then start tackling it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm gonna go to Mrs. Brooks, but before that, Ms. O'Neil, get ready. So, go ahead.
Is there? My question is, if we were to Google you and find something odd, what would that odd thing be that you could describe to us tonight if you know that there's something that?
Don't, I don't think there's anything odd.
Okay. Good. Um, I'm gonna actually ask a second question. Um, Fall River and Dartmouth are not even apples and oranges. We're talking apples and cement blocks, I guess.
Of course.
Something completely different. Um, perhaps the work that you had done in the Coventry-Foster-Gloster dealing with town versus city, um, will have given you some information. But I, I'm looking at, um, you know, your stabilization, the overall budget of your community. Um, we just hit a hundred million for the first time and we almost had a heart attack. Um, and, and your budget, you know, you're looking at a hun, a hundred million and thinking, that's a department.
Well, that's, that's the school department. So I think your budget was a hundred and three million when I looked at it. Um, so this is, so people look at like, okay, this is like, but the numbers, it doesn't matter how big they are, the work's the same. So, I mean, I had, you know, a smaller budget at the region, but it was the same, the work's the same. So, the difference between here and like a city like Fall River is again, the, the, the amount of grants. So obviously a gateway city gets, you know, a lot more grants. But as far as your, like, school department grants, those are probably very similar. It's just, you know, Dartmouth doesn't get the same dollar amount. But the, the amount of reporting and what's required is still the same. So, I think that's, it's, it doesn't really matter that, you know, there's a hundred million, four hundred and thirty mil, it's, it's still the same amount of work.
Thank you.
Ms. O'Neil?
Here he is.
Yep, hi guys. Uh, Ms. Almond, thank you for accommodating me tonight, um, by Zoom. Um, just a couple of quick, uh, specific questions. Uh, the number of direct reports that you have right now in your current position or the highest number of direct reports that you've had in your prior positions?
So currently now I have twenty-six, twenty-seven direct reports.
Is that the highest number?
That I've, um, ever had.
That you've had, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the, uh, we've got some open positions in town, uh, that we're looking to fill and, um, that, that work will continue. Um, your experience in HR would be helpful in that regard. Um, what ideas do you have for fostering a, a, a better environment for the employees of the town? Not just the department heads, but the, um, you know, but every employee to make sure that Dartmouth is seen as a, as a great place to go to work?
So I, when I walk, when I got to Fall River, um, there was a lot of openings just in finance that I had to fill and promote and work. So I've been very successful in that and filling those positions. I think people like working with me because I, um, treat them fairly, I, I respect people, I treat them professionally. I don't believe in, you know, making anybody feel foolish in front of anybody else. And I also believe in helping them grow and learn. So I have, you know, a very successful team that I've developed just in two and a half years. Again, because I had a lot of openings. I mean, we had an assistant treasurer that was, we had to promote, I had to promote an assistant collector. I had to build an entire brand-new collector's staff that was, you know, that everybody's knew. My entire auditing department is, has less than, you know, two years of experience. So I, I had to do that very quickly to, you know, get things done. So I have a lot of experience doing that.
All right, in, in some of the work that you've done on, you know, building, building your teams around you, um, e, even with department heads, you know, you run into conflicts. Um, do you have any specific examples of, of a conflict that you've had with, uh, with a department head or, um, or even a city councilor or something like that in your, uh, your current position? Um, that you were able to, uh, to work around and, and get to a solution?
Um, yeah, when we were, you know, I'm not gonna tell you what department it was, but we were going through and obviously, you know, there was a budget constraint and there was a position that the union agreed to not fill and that department had then tried filling that without it being authorized and in the budget. And so he was obviously very upset because he felt he didn't agree to it. And it's, you know, we had to kinda come to a meeting of the minds of, it's not budgeted, your union agreed to it and, you know, we're gonna have to move forward and we can talk about it for the next budget, but right now, it's, you know, and we, we moved on from that. But, you know, sometimes it's having, you know, standing strong and having those, nobody likes having difficult conversations, but they have to happen and I'm okay with doing that.
Okay, thank you, Sean, thank you.
All right, so that basically ends the questions. So now it's your turn. If you have any questions of us or you just wanna just make a brief, make a statement, however you want, floor's yours.
So I did, you know, I did read your master plan. Um, one of the things, the priorities it talked about was getting, um, more civic engagement from, you know, younger folks. And I really do believe in that because I think we have such a, you know, a lack of younger people getting involved in government. And so one of the reasons I got involved in government was I was sitting on a finance, um, committee at my local school department and getting very frustrated with like the red tape and like getting things done and just the constant, you know. So I really like to help bring in like efficiencies and things that I've learned in private industry and bring them into government. And I have to say, like, I have, I have interns, I usually have two to three interns every summer and I absolutely like love introducing them and getting them to like work and, and help within. I don't just limit them to like, you know, one department of mine. I have them, you know, operate among cross-departments. And I do enjoy that because I think it's, I think young people are afraid to even go into town hall sometimes. You know, they don't, it's like the, a taboo thing. So opening that up to say like, you know, it's just another place and it's also another avenue of, of jobs. I mean, that, when you go to college and you go for accounting or finance, they don't discuss, you take a government class, but it doesn't push you to go into government finance. And there's such a shortage of government finance. And, you know, working with, um, some of even like the local colleges and getting them to start to maybe push, you know, kids this way, it's, it's another avenue, like, we don't all have to go to Wall Street, so, you know.
True that. All right, um, anything else you wanna add, or?
I mean, I did read that you're, um, so I, I guess you guys are looking to make a very, make your decision quickly.
One day.
One day, okay.
Yep, yep, it gives us, um, first of all, I don't think anybody wants to sit through four interviews because it's really unfair to all four, um, to go through it because it's, at some point in time, you just get really like, uh, you know. So we, we did the, the two and two. Um, and given, we do, we definitely wanna definitely make this decision. Um, but I do wanna give, um, give the board enough time to cogitate over this because it is a decision that's going to affect this town for decades to come. Um, and I think, you know, most of us here, we wanna make sure that we do right by our citizens.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, you know, in developing a lot of these questions, you know, I specifically asked, you know, our, the board, you know, to submit questions, but I also asked staff and department heads. And this is basically a conglomeration of everything. And there were some really great questions and, and there was a few that I left out because it was just the timeframe, I didn't think I'd have enough timeframe. So I was very, very careful about that. But I, but in developing these questions and putting together, I want, we wanna see, we wanna see your character. We wanna see how you think about things, how, how you go about dealing with situations and, and developing things. And, you know, it gives us, it's definitely not a psychological test, that's for sure. But it gives us kind of a little bit of an insight as to, um, how you would approach things, you know, in, here in Dartmouth. Um, you know, we have, we have a saying, Dartmouth pride, you know. It's not a cheap saying, it's something that's very deep, it runs extremely deep in a lot of us in this town. And I think we want, we all know that we want the best. Um, and we also expect the best. And that's the big thing. Um, our employees expect to be treated well, but they expect to be valued, they expect to be, um, treated well and listened to. And same thing with our residents. So everybody wants to be treated well. Somebody walks through that door, they want, you know, they're not expected to be treated like a king and a queen, but they expect to be respected. And I think that's, I think everybody's like that. So, um, if you have nothing else, I think we're, we've got a good flavor of, of what you're about. And I appreciate you applying, I appreciate you sitting there because it's not a, it's not a very difficult, it's not a very easy thing to do. You have to sell yourself and sometimes that's not within our, not within our bailiwick. So I, I thank you, um, and you'll definitely be hearing from us.
I appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, it was very nice meeting all of you.
Thank you, all right. So in conclusion, um, we are concluding tonight's interviews. Tomorrow's interviews will be conducting at five o'clock. It'll be following the same format. And then after that, um, what is being taped by DCTV will be released for everybody to see. Um, and we appreciate our audience, thank you for coming, everybody, we appreciate that. And with that, I need a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mickelson, is there a second?
Mrs. Brooks.
Seconded by Mrs. Brooks. Because we have somebody by remote, we need to roll call. Mr. Tattlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
And the chair votes in favor. Good night, everybody, thank you.